Okay. David, while you're here, we decided we were gonna get to the minutes first.
All right.
And then we will discuss the account for the peer review for 40B. We were doing that. Hopefully, you were gonna show up then, so you could get involved with that discussion. But, okay. We'll discuss the minutes of December 17th, 2015. Does anybody have any comments on that particular one? I had a couple here, Kim. I would review with you on the first page, second paragraph. I think we should say, instead of Mr. Latham, Attorney Brad Latham. And the last sentence of that paragraph where it goes in, "Mr. Latham listed," I thought we should insert, "and gave arguments for the four criteria required for a variance." Delete what he thought. Take that out, what he thought were. Now, he gave arguments for the four criteria required. And is Glenn's title Code Enforcement Officer, I believe? Mr. Redmond is the Code Enforcement Officer?
Okay.
And rather than the zoning enforcement officer, code enforcement, I think it is. And "er," yeah. And Mr. Jerema's paragraph.
I don't remember. Yeah, I just had that circled. I don't remember making a comment about it.
Well, that's what I meant. Rather than, "There were banks on Haven Street that he felt would require additional signage." He didn't, you know, he doesn't know that they're gonna require it. He thought they would if they do. So I thought he could put that in. And never noticed, yeah. And again, second paragraph, case 1513, or, excuse me, second page, case 1513, Mr. Redfern?
Yes.
Red, Mr. Redmond's comments. Mr. Redmond is the Code Enforcement Officer. And let's see. Oh, in the last paragraph of that page two, second sentence, "Ms. Russo said the number of rooms in each unit will remain as is." If you can insert "as is." "Only the square footage will change." That's okay. And I think that's all I, oh.
On the last page?
Yeah.
In the paragraph that starts off on a motion by Mr. Hagstrom?
Yeah.
The second line up in the bottom reading should be capitalized.
Okay, right. I missed that. And I had, under the special permit, it's conditioned on the following. Then you have three, three conditions. And then, under that, you had, "Mr. Jerema suggested adding a finding to the motion." But I think we should take that whole sentence out. There is no finding to be added to that. So that's all I had on that for December.
The only one I had was, you gotta learn how to spell size name.
I do, I know, I follow.
Okay.
And, Kim, on the first page, I don't remember questioning the car sign being altered for adding lights. Can't add lights to concrete, so. You just say, take it out.
Okay.
The move that we accept the minutes of December 17th, 2015, as amended?
Text.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor? Okay, pass. The 17th minutes are accepted as amended. Okay, we have January 7th. And again, I will go here. First page, Kim, about the middle of the page, Mr. Redfern read the memo submitted by Glenn Redmond, Code Enforcement Officer?
Yeah.
And last sentence, or last paragraph, "Mrs. Tomy confirmed after construction, the existing three bedrooms will be converted to a large bedroom with an office." And just a clarification, on the second page, the fourth sentence down, "Mr. Jerema suggested eliminating the platform at the side stairs as opposed to the front stairs." I wanna put words in my mouth, okay. And then, "Ms. Tomy asked that the variance request to be withdrawn, and this would include the proposed garage, proposed in front of garage, and the four-by-four platform at the side stairs to the dwelling." That clarifies it. On the middle paragraph there, on a motion, second sentence, "Move to approve the request for a withdrawal without prejudice." Can we assert that without prejudice after the withdrawal? Relating to the variance, take out in the third sentence, "A," and replace it with "the variance request." Insert "request after variance." I think that's it, for me, anyway. Anybody else have any comments?
Down at the bottom of that page, Mr. Jerema withdrew the second on the motion. Second of the motion.
The second of the motion. Okay. I have no further comments on that.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 7th, 2016, as amended?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor of approving, or the motion, raise your hand, thank you. Minutes of January 7th approved as amended. And we have the minutes of February 4th, 2016. I read through them myself and didn't have a comment when I read through them.
I think the petitioner's name is noted as Zucker. I checked it with Zucker, without the C.
Okay, is it?
What is it, the petitioner?
Yeah, we have Mr. Matthew Zucker.
Oh, okay, so what is it?
I think it's Zucker.
If you could check on that, Kim?
Okay, I will check on that.
Double check.
Go ahead, he signed out, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Eric, on that.
Halfway down, Ms. Hackett, mass housing should be separation between mass and housing.
I'm sorry, where is that?
Space, halfway down.
On the second page?
Second page. Wait a second.
I'm looking.
Is it second page?
Must be third.
Third page, yes.
Third page, ah, yes, yes, okay. And you got a Mr. Zucker there again on the third page, I see.
Miss Mass Housing?
Where Ms. Hackett is, halfway in the sentence.
Oh, okay, Mass Housing, two words.
Just a space.
Might as well change it up above to where I come in, Mr. Trinell. Third paragraph now.
Yep. All right.
How'd you keep straight all the people who are, which are addresses and everything, because of the sign-in?
I already do one piece to it, and then I Google it, and I get back to my.
Oh, yeah.
Well, just in the future, not with, as it relates to the minutes, but there were, it was a quorum of the CPDC there.
Okay.
Three out of the five members.
Yeah.
And we ought to make sure that they call meeting to order if there are other groups in the room, other committees or boards in the room in the next hearing, just so that nobody squawks about the public meeting law or anything like that related to these meetings.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I happened to stop today and saw both Julie and Jean, and mentioned that. And she said they had posted.
She had posted that they were gonna be there.
At that meeting, at that meeting. So I was posted by planning. I didn't, you know, I'm not gonna check.
Does that mean that you don't have to call a meeting to order?
That's a good question, I don't know.
Anyway, we can discuss that after the minutes, and after we discuss the other one. It's something that I had mentioned to Si earlier, because I'm gonna bring it up on the upcoming selectmen's meeting next week of our board is gonna be there. Okay, I would accept a motion on the February 4th minutes.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 4th, 2016?
As amended.
As amended.
Seconded by Mr. Jerema, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Next item we have is discussion and adoption by the board of the regulations required to open up, regulations or procedures required by a municipal, by Reading, or by the town to open up a municipal account, special municipal account for consultant review fees, or peer review that we're gonna have for the 40B at Reading Village. On that end, I think you see with us tonight the printout on the, basically, the Mass General Law Chapter 44, subsections 53G, which are those regulations required for the town to open up an account on that. If there's any discussions, we'll be glad to discuss it. If not, we could go ahead and have a motion to accept these regulations in order to, regulations of procedures in order to open up an account for peer review.
The reason I stopped down today is because when I went through it, I had some questions, and I wanted to find out what either Jean or Julie thought about it. And in essence, we already gave them permission to go out there and recruit, or at least to.
Yes.
But not to sign anybody up. Reality is that according to this, the board has to vote to put that person on. The staff cannot.
Okay.
But what Julie said that she was looking forward from us this evening was to accept this as the state guidelines for adopting.
Right.
A account to be set up that we would follow. So these are what the state apparently offers and what Julie and Jean and the state had put together.
Right.
She wants us to accept this as a procedural method of doing things. But what it comes down to, when you look at it, is that the board has got to, in essence, approve or actually take a vote on it to allow that particular consultant or consultants to be brought on at whatever the going rate is.
Right.
So it's the board's responsibility to authorize the hiring or retention of a consultant based upon the town's recommendation?
Well, yes. I asked, the two questions, the two things that I ask at times, what's the responsibility of the board in this process? And what's the liability on the board in this particular situation? Because I've been, in my past, I've been very concerned about liabilities. So if we're giving it all up to the town, is that what, the daytime staff? She said, no. This is the procedure we have followed, but if you look at section three and you go down to section four, it says that the board is responsible for hiring, even though.
Right, I saw that.
For the town, or for the staff, to go out there and recruit and make a suggestion to the board.
Right.
And then the same thing with the number of consultants that may or may not be needed. And if there is, again, toward the end of it, if there's money to be returned at the end, the board authorized the town to give back. And if it needs more, then we have to authorize it to follow over there.
Right. So the way I understand it is that the board will be presented with options or the town's recommended consultant?
I didn't ask that question, if they're gonna recommend one person or they're gonna, or gonna offer us a couple of, and make a suggestion on what they have found.
Okay, and then, based upon, and my guess is, again, the way I've seen it work, is they receive some sort of an RFP or an estimate as to what that might cost. And then the board authorizes the town to request of the applicant a deposit amount or funds to go into the account to compensate those peer review consultants based upon the selections that we make from the options presented to us.
Within the 10-day period that they do in section four.
All right.
There's a certain, yeah, yeah. Now, at the last meeting, we did take a vote. David, I believe you made the motion on that, and we voted 5-0-0, to authorize the town to open up an account for peer review. But, from what I understood, and that's essentially what I think this is, these rules and regulations are. But essentially, from what I gather, is it has to be on an agenda, you know, to do that, too.
Well, it has to be part of the meeting.
Has to be part of a, well, it was part of the meeting the last time, but it wasn't on the agenda. This is on the agenda tonight, so now it can be officially recorded.
Right, the motion that was made was to authorize town staff to begin the process of soliciting consultants and securing consultants.
Right.
And we went through the specific areas that we wanted to see consultants in. So this, tonight, would authorize the opening of the account. Then, once they get to the selection of consultants, they bring it back to the board. We vote on hiring.
Yeah.
And then presumably, at that point, come up with an amount that somebody will suggest to us sufficient for the applicant to deposit in that account to cover, or maybe more than cover.
Sure.
Any anticipated fees that we expect a consultant to charge.
Yep.
The word that bothered me in this write-up, in that section three, was the word "selection." Who does the selecting of the consultants? This says we do.
Well, that's why.
Who determines whether a consultant is needed in a specific area?
The two terms, again, I used is responsibility and liability. So we're taking from David's motion.
Right.
They're gonna give us consultants that they have reviewed.
They will give us some candid dates.
And gotten some, I would assume, some estimates of what the cost would be. Make a recommendation to the board. The board then votes on that based upon what they, what we've already made the motion on. So in terms of selection, it's what is recommended back to us. But the responsibility is on one side, and the liability is on the other side. Not that it's ever gonna come back on the board, but who knows what Mass Housing is doing these days?
Well, I mean, you know, I guess we also ought to get a little bit of feedback from daytime government on, you know, is this an RFP process that they're, are they putting these consultancies out to bid? Or are they actively going out and saying, hey, you're a engineering consultant, we'd like to hire you to be our peer review consultant? And they already have some folks in mind.
It's an interesting question, because there are a lot of engineering consultants out there.
Yeah, yeah.
How do you pick them?
Well.
Soul source or competitive?
From what I understood today, from talking to them, is that they're going out there, like on an RFP situation, here's the parameters that the town's, or the daytime staff is concerned about. And this is what they need for peer review. Are you interested? Look it over, give us an R, give us an estimate of what you can and can't do. And then that's gonna come back to the board.
Right.
With recommendations, I think, from the staff. So it's like a combination of the two. We're not actually going out there and recruiting.
No, I agree with that, I understand that. That is our job.
I would believe they would probably go to a firm that's a general engineering consultant that could handle stormwater, sewage, water, site designs, traffic, et cetera, on that.
It might be one consultant.
Might be one consultant, might be suitable for all of it.
It may not, you know, it may not be the.
A lot of times, traffic is a specialty sometimes.
I asked about, I asked about that today, and they could not find another person. But the individual who was our liaison, not our town council liaison?
Yes.
The other individual, I can't remember his name.
He was the Mass Housing.
Was it?
Paul Haverty?
Yes, Haverty, yes.
Apparently, he is not continuing on, from what I found out today.
Really?
Yeah, they're gonna go with town councils.
I know he was concerned that we had the meeting scheduled for March 17th.
Well, whatever. I didn't, I didn't go into it.
I didn't know it was a deal breaker.
I didn't go into it.
Hey, we're working on that now.
But the suggestion was made that he had some recommendations for some larger firms on traffic that they were gonna look into, because nobody else around.
Oh, there's many for it. I mean, I could name two or three firms that could handle every item on that they were looking at. There used to be Vanessa Hagen, I think it's, well, they're on their side now, Vanessa for traffic. But there's other, there's other firms out there. But, yeah, basically that. And then the other thing in regards to that, and I'll make note, I know I came down one day and discussed it with Jean and Julie, and they were putting together an application to the state for a grant for peer reviews. And from what I understand, they're hopeful of getting a grant from the state in regards to peer review for this, to pay for a lot of it. And, you know, I don't, I'm gonna leave it up to daytime government, as David says, to handle the finances in regards to how this is all gonna work, but we'll go from there. But I think you're right, John, that reading that, we will eventually have to do a formal review and approval of the peer review consultants.
And maybe we'll get a bit of an update on that at the selectmen's meeting?
Maybe.
You know, maybe they'll have some updates on that when they present for the select, well, that's a joint meeting of the selectmen and CPDC.
Yes.
Coming up.
That's what I understand, yeah, yeah.
Is that Parker Middle School, too?
Yes.
Expecting some crowds.
And if, I think David brought up a good point, too, that if there were gonna be more than three of us going to that, just to sit in the back, we would have a quorum, so we may be in the best, best of both worlds request.
After we go through this, I have that on in my mind to discuss that, yeah.
I plan, I plan to be there, so.
Okay. If we're through with discussions on this, then I guess I would need a motion to accept these regulations or procedures in order to, or a motion to adopt these regulations or procedures in order to open up a, an account by the town, a special account for peer review for Reading Village.
Well said, can I repeat that?
Absolutely, you could say, so moved.
I'll, I'll move that the board adopt the regulations promulgated by General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53G for the opening, maintenance, and handling of a special municipal account for consultant review fees related to this 40B application.
Reading Village, quote, Reading Village, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor? 6-0-0, thank you. Okay. Hopefully, I think that's all they would need, Kim, or start the ball rolling. And the other issue, or the other thing is what we just discussed there now, that we're asking me for, if I knew what the attendance was gonna be at the upcoming order selectmen CPDC meeting on Tuesday, at Parker Middle School, it will be. And I told them I had planned to be there. I know I had run into Si earlier this week, and he said he planned to be there. I think David and I went emailing back and forth earlier, and we had noted each of us would be there. So I'm looking now if there's gonna be anybody else. Right there, there's three people, so there's a quorum. John says he is gonna be there.
I will not be there.
You will not be there, Eric?
I may come late.
You may come late, huh? Okay. We get four right here now, for sure. So that, that right there, as you said, presents a quorum of the zoning board. Now, from what I understood, as you mentioned, David, they were gonna post that as, you know, as the zoning board members being at the meeting. And that was gonna be posted. So whether that suffices in regards to having a quorum there of a board, we don't have to open it up as a meeting or whatever, but I know, I don't plan on discussing it with other members during that night, so. You know, incognizant, you know, being cognizant that you really shouldn't be discussing it outside, I think, outside of our.
I think the board's mere presence as a quorum, though, qualifies for having to call a, call a meeting of the board, whether we say a word or not. The fact that we're present when something's being discussed as a quorum of the board could be construed under the public meeting law as having a meeting. Just because we're there listening to it.
Okay.
And I've seen it happen at many other different boards and committee meetings. Open it, and then when they, when we leave, or when we lose a quorum, somebody gets, one of us gets up and leaves, you know.
We have to have an adjournment then?
Yeah, the motion, you know, motion, you know, motion to adjourn, you know, second.
But then Kathy walks in.
Yeah, we'll have a revolving door.
Kim, could you ask? Kim, could you ask?
I already emailed Jean, Julie, and Mommy.
Okay. And, and they may have to make a quick call to town council and just check, you know. Are we needing the laws around we? Just by posting it, if we're meeting the law, fine. If we have to actually open a meeting for the zoning board and then adjourn it at the end of it, so be it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So right now, 4:02, I plan it, anyway, we'll see what happens.
Well, when, if you were to say something, any one of us were to say something, we just, you have to denote who you are.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
But we're not speaking on behalf, as a member of the board, we're speaking as a private citizen.
Exactly, that's what I say. I think if you did decide to speak, I think you should probably be definitive in that you're speaking as a private citizen or a member of the board.
But I think that if you do have something to say, that it would behoove us, from a transparency standpoint, to announce that we are a member of the board.
A member of the zoning board, yeah.
And then qualify that with, you know, my comments.
Yeah, that's fine.
Coming from the board, let it be as a.
You know, we, we had this discussion, though.
I don't think it'd be all that far.
Five, six years ago?
Yeah.
In regards to a board member wanting to act as a private citizen. And you do give up some rights, I think, as being on a board in regards to being able to get up and talk as a private citizen. In this particular case, it was a board member that had to recuse himself because he was in abutto a case. And then he wanted to get up and comment on the case. You really, oh, I'm doing it as a private citizen, you can't stop me. Says, I don't think you could do it. Eventually, he wrote a letter on that.
But the safest way to do anything.
You've given up some rights, and you're a board member, you are.
But I mean, if you're gonna get up and speak, and you are a board member, the easiest thing to do is ask questions of, do not assert an opinion. The opinion, because it reflects back on you as a board member. A question is not, not in a direction to give an opinion as, you're still a board member, even though you're speaking as a private citizen.
Exactly, you're still a board member. Yep. Okay.
Sometimes it was appropriate to be quiet.
Three attorneys in the room, I mean.
We do, yes, yes. Okay, if there's no further discussions of anything, I would undertake a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kathy, all those in favor? Okay, thank you so much.
Wow.